Okay, we're going to call our January 25th, 2018, regular assembly meeting to order. It is approximately 6:00 on January 25th. I'm going to start with a non-sectarian indication. We'll follow that by the pledge. And those of us that can stand, please join me. We'll give exemptions to those with broken feet. So please take a reflective pose. To be honest, I hate the cold. I freeze easily. But I love how the snow tickles my nose. I love how the trees are naked and the sky dresses them in white like a dress. I love how we can build them in and dance with them. I honestly hate the cold, but I love the different dancing fairies that dance in the sky. I love how the wind sings at night, hushing all the animals to sleep till spring. I love how the grass changes into new shades of color. I hate the cold because I freeze easily. Thank you. So the flag is back there. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'd like to report that it's 20 below, though, so that's just mild. So let's see. Now, Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Lucheski?
Here.
Mr. Quist?
Here.
Mr. Tackey?
Here.
Mr. Cooper?
Here.
Ms. Major?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Gray?
Here.
Mr. Lawrence?
Here.
We have school board rep, Mr. Rice?
Here.
And Ms. Dodge?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Super, thank you very much. So that takes us to a safety announcement. And we have emergency exits, three of them. We have the door behind the pillar, that pillar, and the door behind that pillar, and then, of course, the doors we came in through. So should we need to exit immediately, that's how we get out. So now I'm going to see if there are anyone needs to remove an item from consent agenda, or are there any other procedural motions anyone needs to make or wishes to make? I don't see anyone nodding their head or raising their hand. Does anyone need to declare a possible conflict of interest for items on the consent agenda? I don't see anyone indicating that they do. So that's going to take us to citizens' comments. And we have two types of citizens' comments, that for items on the agenda but not scheduled for public hearing, and that for items that are not on the agenda anywhere. So I'll start with citizen's comment A, and that is items on the agenda but not scheduled for public hearing. So it might be memorandums, bid awards, unfinished business, reconsideration, resolutions, ordinance being advanced. Some open public hearing. I don't have anyone signed up. Does anyone wish to speak on items on the agenda but not up for public hearing? I don't see anybody taking us up on that, so I'm going to close those public hearings. And we're going to move to the public hearing, citizens' comments, and this is items other than those appearing on the agenda, so pretty much everything. I have Amy Geiger and Asa Doughty signed up, so if you'd please come forward and give us your name and address for the record, you'll have three minutes. And once they're done, if anyone else wants to talk about something not on the agenda, we'll have an empty seat for you. Ms. Geiger, your name and address for the record, please.
Certainly. Amy Geiger, 4400 Stanford Drive, Fairbanks, Alaska, 99709.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak with you all tonight. I've got two things I'd like to share with you. One is the 2018 Explore Fairbanks Official Visitors Guide. It's our year-round guide. A couple of new features about the guide. There's a shout-out to local cuisines, breweries, distilleries, and farmers' markets, as that particular part of Fairbanks has grown and refined and evolved into something really worth speaking highly about. It's fantastic to be able to start marketing that whole realm within Fairbanks, and so we've started devoting time and energy to that in the books, as well as on the website. We continue to use local artists and local voices to describe Fairbanks, and those are throughout the guide. And yeah, and we continue to cross-sell winter and summer. So those are some new features. One thing I'd like to point out is this is the first time the Aurora has graced the cover of the guide. It's a fall Aurora, as you can tell. This is the year-round guide, but generally, we reserve the winter guide for the Aurora feature. But the Aurora is so strong, and especially now towards the end of August and throughout September, and it's really proven to be something that visitors are searching for, that we decided it was time to be bold and put it on the cover of the year-round guide. And that's sort of a segue into the second thing that I'd like to talk to you about, and that's the little bookmarks that I passed out. That's the Aurora Tracker and Midnight Sun Tracker. We unveiled that yesterday. It's a new device that we've been working on for a year, or more, actually, and it's a really wonderful sort of -- there's two components to it. The Aurora Tracker tracks the Aurora in real-time and with a three-day forecast as well. We partnered with the Geophysical Institute. We utilize their data, and then we combine and correlate that with weather, daylight hours, and locations, six different locations, actually, and that produces a real-time prediction of what the -- well, it's not a prediction, because it's real-time, of what it's like at the moment, and then also for the next three days. So it actually allows people to chase the Aurora in different directions around Fairbanks, and I don't think there's anything out there like that. North Pole, Clear East Summit, Murphy Dome, Chena Hot Springs Recreation Area and Chena Hot Springs, and Fairbanks itself, as well as Coldfoot, are represented on that portion of the tracker. And then on the flip side of the tracker, it's much more straightforward, but something that we've been marketing for quite a while now, and it's really coming to fruition and evolving, and that is the midnight sun season. So we do get 70 straight days of light in Fairbanks, and that, of course, is very intriguing to people. May 17th through July 27th, it never gets dark. It's also what we call civil twilight. So that's what the daylight tracker does, is tracks daylight hours in three locations. So, thank you.
Thank you. Let's see if there are any questions, like maybe -- yes, Mr. Mayor?
You had a one-day conference yesterday. Looked like it was a good turnout. How many people did you have there?
I believe we had 101 locals, primarily businesses. I think 90-some businesses, yeah. It was great.
Super. And what might those three locations that the midnight sun is?
The midnight sun is Fairbanks, Coldfoot, and Ukchiavik. And we're on the 65th parallel. Coldfoot's on the 67th parallel, and Ukchiavik is on the 71st parallel. And it's really fascinating how dramatic there is a shift of light to dark. Of course, we all know that, we live here, but you can reset it, so wherever you are, any time of year, you can see what amount of daylight hours we'd have.
Interesting. Mr. Cooper has a question for you.
Thanks, as always, for all that you guys do and for bringing down these great publications. I heard the piece on the radio this morning or yesterday morning about the different trackers, and it sounded like Ms. Hickock was also talking about some forecasts for tourism, both summer and winter, that were fairly positive. I don't know if you have enough info to comment on that.
I generally defer to Deb Hickock on those questions, because she really has her finger on the pulse, although I will, you know, say that anecdotally, we have heard good things, so let's just, we'll cross our fingers and hope that all happens.
The one statistic I heard was that road travel is up from 7% to 11% of the total tourism market in Fairbanks, so.
Yeah.
Good increase.
Yeah, that's good. Great.
Super. And thank you. It's a beautiful book.
Well, thank you so much. We really appreciate all of the help and reinvestment you give to us. Thank you.
Thank you. You enjoyed the Aurora, huh? Mr. Doughty, your name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
Asa Doughty Jr., 1051 Eastwood Lane, Fairbanks, Alaska, 99712. I went to the meeting Monday night about closing hunting at Tananaw Lakes Recreation Area. I wasn't too happy when I left. The people were there, we must have had 20, 25, 30. We were divided into two groups. That was pretty puzzling, but really what it came down to was nobody was allowed to ask questions or speak. It was gathering information for the Parks and Recreation, I guess. About the only thing they could do would be to testify against the cell for the hunters. They took the pros and the cons and the hazards. That was already pretty well-known. But if you come up with any more hazards, they'd probably take them. The way I looked at that meeting is they'd already tried to close it. They haven't changed their mind. Now, I don't know whether this is going to come up before the assembly or not, when they're finished with it, but there was no testimony or nothing for the public to interact on what's happening. And at the meeting last summer where the hunting was put off, the gentleman brought up that the duck hunters were promised to be able to duck hunt for help cleaning the area up. If that was so, we should honor that project, or leave it open for them. And I think you should ask Mayor Castle if that park was being organized during the time he's in Parks and Recreation, and if he knows anything about the promise, so that people really know what's happening, so that you will know what's happening. And thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Doughty. Let's see if there are questions or comments. Yes, Mr. Lawrence.
Mr. Doughty, just so I'm clear, at this meeting Monday night, how many people appeared or showed up?
I would say 20 to 30.
And they were divided into two groups?
Right.
And then no one was allowed to speak? I mean, what -- somebody had to--
They asked the questions of what -- would people come up with the pros, and they got their list down, and then they asked what's the cons, and they asked the hazards, and there's one or two more. But I tried to ask the question when the park was open and was the mayor involved, and I got shut down and told me, they told us, we weren't to ask questions.
Okay, so, all right, so when -- so people were allowed to--
To give answers to their questions.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Doughty? Yes, Mr. Mayor?
I'm supposed to ask questions, but I'm feeling like I really should address a couple of answers here.
I think if--
But I'm being glared at, so I'll be quiet.
If it's a technical answer, but otherwise.
Technically, I was involved, yes. The master plan, I was probably the primary person in the creation of the master plan for that facility. It was during my tenure as Director of the Parks and Rec Department, so I have quite a bit of knowledge, and I've testified publicly before you already regarding the answers to some of Mr. Doughty's questions. So I'll be glad to cover that under my mayor's comments later in the meeting.
It'll be coming very soon. Thank you. Any other questions?
No, thank you. Here's your response. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Doughty. So I have no one else signed up at this time. Does anyone else wish to speak on items not on the agenda? Seeing none, we're going to close citizens' comments B and move to approval of the agenda and consent agenda. Approval of the consent agenda passes all routine items indicated by an asterisk on the agenda. Consent agenda items are not considered separately unless an assembly member so requests. In the event of such a request, the item is returned to the general agenda. Does anyone need to declare a possible conflict of interest for items on the consent agenda? I see no indication. Are there any other items to be removed from the consent agenda before it's read? I don't see anyone saying so. Clerk, would you please read the consent agenda?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and approval of minutes, special assembly meeting minutes of January 4th, 2018. Communications to the Assembly, memorandums from Mayor Castle recommending the reappointment of members to the following commissions, Chena Riverfront Commission and the Trails Advisory Commission. Memorandum from Lance Roberts, Assembly Road Service Area Committee Chair regarding the FY 2019 Service Area Project Scoring Matrix and the Scoring System Process. RFP number 18006, Transit Bus Fleet Maintenance and Repairs. Approval of the proposal submitted by Western Peterbilt LLC in the amount of $210,000 for the initial contract period and an estimated $350,000 if the two one-year renewal options are exercised. Consideration of calendar new business ordinances to be referred to a committee or commissions. We have an ordinance 2018-06, an ordinance amending Chapter 18.104 Fairbanks North Starborough Code regarding notification of rezoning, conditional uses and variances, and amending procedures for rezoning and conditional use permits. The sponsor is Assembly Member Roberts. Refer to the Planning Commission meeting on February 27th, 2018, with the recommendation due back no later than April 2nd, 2018. Iteration of calendar new business ordinances to be introduced and advanced to a public hearing. We have ordinance 2018-04, an ordinance amending Chapter 21.28 Fairbanks North Starborough Code regarding criteria for no other adequate source of heat determinations. The sponsors, Assembly Members Roberts and Lucheski. Refer to the Committee of the Whole on February 1st, 2018. Advance to February 8th, 2018 for public hearing. Ordinance 2018-05, an ordinance amending the Fairbanks North Starborough Code 3.24.050 regarding Assembly Road Service Area Committee. The sponsors, Assembly Member Roberts. Refer to the Committee of the Whole on February 1st, 2018. Advance to February 8th, 2018 for public hearing. Ordinance 2017-20-1S, an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2017-18 budget by appropriating $178,700 from the general fund, fund balance to the general fund non-departmental for a one-time membership fee to the Fairbanks Metropolitan Area Transportation System. Metropolitan Planning Organization. The sponsors, Mayor Castle and Assembly Member Lawrence. Refer to the Finance Committee on February 1st, 2018. Advance to February 8th, 2018 for public hearing. And that concludes your consent agenda.
Thank you. Look for a motion to approve the agenda.
Move to approve?
Second.
So it's been moved by Mr. Gray and seconded by Mr. Tackey. Any objection to approving the consent agenda as read? Seeing none, it's unanimously adopted. And that takes us to messages from the Borough Mayor. Mr. Mayor, have you messages for us?
I do have a few. I guess I'll start with a report on Tananaw Lakes, since Mr. Doughty brought that up and gave me some new information that I was not aware of, and if he needs to run, then he'll get the report from me, and he can be free to run. Yes, I was engaged in the creation of the master plan. I worked with Ducks Unlimited and the Duck Hunting Group in the creation of that facility. And I was -- I'm the one who asked our Parks and Rec Department to go back out with a new public process on the rule changes that they had made out there, and we're still taking a look at that. I'm very surprised to hear what you said with regard to how the meeting was run. I was not there. I don't -- if it -- I will investigate that. I've already taken some notes on it, and we'll look into it, because what you've described, I don't consider to be an adequate public process. I would agree with you, but I need to investigate that, so I will. And yes, when we created the master plan for that facility, the idea was to do the best we could to maintain duck hunting as an activity within the recreation area, most likely not the entire recreation area, because we need to address public safety and the variety of users that use it. But it's a large enough facility that we felt we would be able to accommodate some of the duck hunting with potential restrictions. I mean, historically, there was a variety of hunting activities going on out there, moose hunting included, but it was determined through the master planning process that the discharge of .30-OT sixes, et cetera, the larger caliber rifles for moose hunting was really not compatible with the range that they have. That's something that you couldn't do safely within the recreation area. So that kind of hunting, we had to ban from the facility as it has developed. But discharge of shotguns, obviously, with a much shorter range and a totally different safety profile to that type of firearm, it's something that ought to be able to be accommodated out there, and we will try to figure out how to make that work. And that was the commitment. There wasn't an absolute guarantee that it would continue, but that we would make every effort possible to try to maintain it to the greatest extent that we could while still maintaining public safety with the other users of that facility. So that's my philosophy. I haven't changed at all, and I will continue to follow through with that and check up on it. So thank you for the information about that meeting. On a little more positive and upbeat note, we got an EPA-targeted airshed grant notification. We just got $4 million coming to the state, DEC, to pass on to us after they shave a little off the top. But essentially, $4 million for targeted airshed grant coming up here. So that's really good news. That will help us. There's still a lot of work to do with that, and EPA will be putting some sideboards on how we can utilize it, et cetera, but we can always use some extra $4 million to work on air quality in our community, and that's what it will be for. More financial good news. I just love it when we have good news. Our fund balance is now -- did you get the report that came out today on our fund balance? We are now within target. The Assembly's targeted reserve amount of 17% or greater were there at 18.92 with the money from the lapse from last year, which is an audited number, and so there's $25 million and change in the bank, which is good news. I'll sleep better tonight, knowing that. Little more air quality information. The town hall is coming up Tuesday out in North Pole, so it is a town hall meeting that's not at the town hall. It's over at the library. We moved to a larger venue, so come on out, 6:00 Tuesday evening. We'll be giving people information about the whole air quality program, where we are and what we're doing, and kind of mostly an update on the regs and how it all works and what our objectives are with that. Along those lines, thank goodness with this cold weather, we're also having air movement because we haven't had any alerts recently with this cold weather, which is nice to see, thanks to whoever's responsible for the weather. Before that, however, we issued some more warning letters for people who were operating outside of the regulations. We have now issued a total of 152 warning letters. In addition to the 94 calls that we had made before January 1st, our office has made actually 24 more phone calls. It's ongoing. I'm trying to add up the calls I made today. Make that 25 phone calls to folks. And again, the majority are appreciative that we're calling on these courtesy calls. There were six, however, that were just kind of saying, nope, sorry, not playing, goodbye, or worse. Trying to be as positive as possible here. We still have issued totally for this winter, one citation has been issued, but there are two more that are ready to go out in the very, very near future, possibly tomorrow. So the folks that, for one reason or another, we just can't find a route to success, and so we end up going that way. So that's the air quality report. I guess also good and bad news associated with right-of-way encroachments and whatnot. You've been having a number of emails go to you folks that we need to do more about encroachments and right-of-ways. It's been a challenge. I apologize for how long it's taken us to find the solution, so to speak, but there were a number of issues, including laws and those things that we try to abide by and operate responsibly, and so we didn't really have a policy that I think was defensible, and we had to go back to the drawing board and work through that process. We've come to the conclusion, however, and we will be doing much more enforcement regarding right-of-ways and encroachments thereof, and the one particular hot topic button that you had been emailed the most about could be being resolved as we speak. It's imminent, let's put it that way. It's a public safety issue, you know, we need to maintain our roads, and there are some folks in the community that have been playing games with us and manipulating the system just to create safety hazards in our right-of-ways, and it's not appropriate. It is appropriate that we maintain access for emergency vehicles, et cetera, and that's all we're doing, is we're maintaining, keeping right-of-ways open. And I think that's important. I believe you also got an email regarding our Hays Research survey, so kind of along the lines of our sandbox group meetings and putting out some information to the public and, more importantly, getting information from the public and their position on a variety of topics regarding finances and services that we provide. We did go out to bid and got Hays Research, who's done quite a bit of surveying and polling in our community. They do a good statistically valid way of polling and doing this research, and we wanted to make sure that we had some good, defensible, statistical analysis of attitudes in the public. So that has started today, and calls will be going out, so if folks out there get a phone call from Hays Research, it's not somebody in a scam on taxes or anything that seems to be a popular thing to do. This is real research, and we're looking forward to getting the numbers on impressions and attitudes from the people in our community. With that, I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Let's see if there are any. Apparently, you were quite thorough.
Evidently. Thank you.
So that takes us to reports from special and standing committees, and I think I'll start with Mr. Tackey today.
All right, thanks. Just the same report that I provided last week at the work session of the Audit Committee meeting on the 19th. We approved the audit reports from the Cook and Hogburg for the school district, the borough, and also IGU. All of them were clean audits, and everything showed signs of improvement. There were no current year recommendations for the borough, and we were improving on the previous year recommendations from that report, and then only one small recommendation for the school district with improvements from the previous years, and the recommendation is just procedures for cash management at each individual school and making sure the process is the same. So it should be a pretty easy recommendation to clean out. So everything else is looking good.
Super, thank you. Mr. Lucheski?
A report.
And Mr. Gray?
No report, thank you.
Mr. Lawrence?
I have no report.
Okey-dokey. Ms. Major?
No report, thank you.
Mr. Roberts?
The Land Management Commission met this last week. We had updates, and mostly we discussed a list of questions that had -- or issues that had been generated some years ago for Elmac to work on, and we talked about what had been done and worked on updating that list for work moving forward, and we apprised them of the work we needed to do on the direct sale ordinance, which wasn't agendized enough for us to actually work on it, and so we'll be getting back to that, and I've already been having meetings with land management to work on that ahead of time so that we're well-prepared.
Super, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Roberts? Mr. Quist?
Thank you. The Sustainability Commission met yesterday, yesterday evening here in these chambers. They did a little bit of reorganization, elected new officers, Ariann Glover as Vice Chair and Brett Parks as Chair. Big thanks to Mr. Manetti, who's been chairing the Recycling and now Sustainability Commission for quite some time, and everything that he's done and continues to do on the commission. On the agenda and things that were -- they discussed the town hall meeting that they had recently held and ideas that came out of that, changed the start time of their meeting from 5:30 to start at 6:30 instead, just to make it easier for commissioners to get there on time. They also discussed just strategies and ideas for another kind of informational gathering town hall they're looking to do in some months in the spring. So I mean, the Sustainability Commission, in a way, you know, it's new and is, you know, in the process of discovering itself and its scope. And let's see, also, they set some agenda items coming up to workshop plans for their next town hall. Also, they're looking into a new round of training on Open Meetings Act, as well as potentially some training from the clerks on Roberts' rules, et cetera. The next regular meeting will be the 21st of February at 6:30, at the new start time. The location to be determined. The location to be determined. The Air Pollution Control Commission will meet on the 6th at 6:00 P. M. in these chambers. The agenda just came out, or draft agenda, amongst other things, variances will be discussed. We recently gave the commission a larger scope in the variance process, and they're going to be discussing how they're going to be handling that. And then the Capital Projects and Legislative Priorities Committee were setting a meeting, likely the 8th or the 9th. And that's it. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Busy. Thank you. See any questions? Mr. Gray? I'm sorry. Mr. Cooper.
I'll just add on to Mr. Tackey's report. It was in an email earlier this week, but Cook and Hogberg will present on the March 15 Finance Committee on their comprehensive annual financial reports and audits. Look forward to that.
And I, too, have nothing to report. I think that takes us to the resolutions. Do you agree, Clerk? Yep. So on page... Well, it's on page eight of my agenda. We'll move on to Resolution Number 201803. Ms. Stuvik, paging Ms. Stuvik. We're moving on to Resolution 201803. A resolution ratifying the monetary terms of the negotiated collective bargaining agreement between the Alaska State Employee Association, American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Local 52, A F L, C I O, and the Fairbanks North Star Borough. The sponsor is Mayor Castle. It's on page 266 of your packet. There's additional information in the yellow folders. Ms. Stuvik, I assumed you didn't have a presentation. Was that a good assumption? Do you need time to set up for...
No, I don't.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Castle.
Other than we've been running numbers fast and furiously today for you, just so you can kind of quantify some of this as things are coming off. In your yellow folders, there is the updated spreadsheet for you with dollar amounts as a result of these agreements. And we also ran the total increase. If you look at compensation for employees, their wages and their benefits all rolled together, and what kind of an increase that we're looking at for these contracts would result in FY '19 of a .37% increase in compensation total package, .37%. Then in '20, it would only be in .31%, and in '21, it would be a .13% increase in their compensation package. So that's looking at everything, assuming that PERS and those items remain constant, which they could go up. If they go up, that would affect the number. We're not expecting that, however, but that is factoring in all the knowns that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. The clerks have drawn my attention to the fact that we could open citizens' comments for items that are not available for public comment, which would be these resolutions that we are addressing now. If anyone wishes to speak on these resolutions? Option? Looks like we don't have any takers, so we'll go ahead and proceed. Is that your staff report, or do you wish to add anything more?
Oh, no. I have more.
Okay.
So thank you very much. Before you tonight is a resolution to approve the monetary terms of the collective bargaining agreement between the borough and the Alaska State Employees Association, which represents our exempt professional manager and directors. The contract is for a three-year period to begin July 1, 2018, and ending on June 30 of 2021. At last week's Finance Committee meeting, we reviewed all of the monetary terms of the agreement. The summary of those changes is in your packet, starting on page 271. And I do not intend upon going through those again since I think we had a thorough discussion last week. Negotiations were very professional with this group. Both sides worked diligently to address the issues that were raised and brought forward. I believe a very good contract that reviews and addresses many of our bargaining goals and objectives. On page 273 of your packet shows the estimated cost of the contract changes. And at the top of that table are the estimated costs that include step movement, C P I, and acting pay. As I indicated last week, when we prepared these estimates, I was estimating C P I at .6, and it actually came in a little lower at .5. The estimates have not been updated. The estimated cost for this contract is $61,000 in FY '19, $62,000 in FY '20, and $52,000 in FY '21. And those are the estimated increased costs as a result of the contract. Funding for the monetary terms of this contract will be incorporated in the mayor's FY '19 budget. And at last week's meeting, Mr. Quest did ask us for some wage information, and that was provided in your yellow folder today. And the mayor kind of talked about that at the beginning of this presentation. You can see that it's broken out by bargaining unit. I also added the non-represented group. So that total for FY '18 was the wages at about $27.3 million for FY '18, expected to go to about $27.9 in FY '19, $28.6 in FY '20, and $29.3 in FY '21. You can also see the chart in the middle of that that indicates where people are on the salary tables. And you'll notice that there are a lot of people that are currently at the T-step, and those employees are considered redlined and not eligible for additional step movement, but they would be eligible for the C P I adjustment. And at the end of this table, we added the variances based upon the negotiated healthcare plan changes. And those estimates, again, are based upon the consultant's estimate and what the impact will be to the health plan. And so that's the additional information. And I would just like to say that the employees that are in this bargaining unit are amazing managers. They make the borough shine. They work hard managing staff. They've been working with reduced budgets for several years and have continued to provide good service to the residents in our community. And I think, as the mayor would say, they're winning the Super Bowl of municipal government. So I appreciate their efforts. I want to thank them again for their continued service to the borough, and that concludes my report.
Okay. Let's see if there are... Let's see.
To adopt.
Thank you. So moved by Mr. Cooper and seconded by Mr. Lajewski.
Oh, no, no. I actually have a procedural question.
Mr. Tackey? Yes, Mr. Lajewski.
I think before we discuss this, there may be some conflicts of interest on the Assembly.
Aye.
And with respect to... This is a contract... Let's see, we're on A S E, Local 52, correct?
A S E A.
I'm correct?
Yes. That's it.
Okay. Oh, I was doing a little research before the meeting, and some members of the Assembly have received significant monetary contributions campaign-wise. And I personally think it's inappropriate for those members to vote on a contract from a significant political donor.
We specifically exempt campaign contributions under our ethics code from conflicts. So I don't think that is a conflict of interest.
Let's see, our other discussion.
What, with regards to the issue raised by Mr. Lajewski?
The issue raised by Mr....
No, I have nothing.
I think then... Oh, there was no second? I don't think he made a motion.
There wasn't a motion.
Oh, Mr.... The second was Mr. Tackey. Okay. Any other discussion on the contract in front of us? Yes? Mr. Lawrence?
The contract or the...
The resolution.
The resolution.
Apologies.
I've got a question for Ms. Stuvik.
Okay.
You mentioned that the overall cost of the whole package, which would include wages and benefits, were going to... Would increase, I think, by .37% in FY '19, .31% in '20, and .13% in FY '21. Is that correct?
Actually, the mayor talked about that, I think. Those are the changes in the collective bargaining agreement. What I provided to you on the estimate that was in your packet is what the overall wage is, which are just the amounts that are paid to employees for the effort, and the offsets based upon the health plan. So the health plan is about somewhere between 27% and 28% of the staff benefit rate calculation. But as the mayor indicated, other variables on that could change. So those, you know, PERS could decide to... You know, right now, we know that the rate is set at 22%. V I C A and Medicare is another 7.7% of that. We have other benefits that are also included in that, and that information will be provided to you through the normal budget process. So I don't know if you remember, but I always give you a big, thick H R packet of stuff at the beginning of the budget process, and that staff benefit rate will be included in that.
So what's on this sheet that was provided to us? It shows wage increases, but yours... And then percentages. But that's just wages, or is that wages and benefits?
The top part of this is just the wage section. So up above where the table is, is just what the wages are estimated. And I estimated C P I at this year at .6, which it came in at .5. And I estimated C P I at .8 for the second and the third year of the contract, which could be higher or could be lower. And that's why I gave you the caveat that I did, because it's based upon whatever the Anchorage urban rate will be, so...
All right. But I'm talking about below the top table, you've got, you know, four fiscal years, FY ' '18 through '21. You've got wage estimates paid, and then the increase in percentage increase.
Right. And those are just the flat wages. So that's just the...
Applying the wages. Wages. Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Major.
So just to clarify on that, wages, just for the discussion point, so that also includes... So that, like, the total wage estimate increases over the next few years includes those who are not represented by a bargaining unit as well?
It does, yeah, because that's what you'll see in the summary and the benefit... Or in the budget booklet, is what the wages will be for all of the category.
Anything else? Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I could provide this other spreadsheet if you wanted. Really, all it does is it totals out the wages and then the other benefits, what the package, the total compensation package, to all of our system. So instead of being $27 million, we're spending $45 million to compensate the employees completely for all of the packages. And the increase, then, as projected on the sheet that Ms. Stuvik gave you, shows that our total compensation package is going up $164,000. That's $164,000 increase on what is a $45 million cost currently for us. And that's where you get the .37% increase. I could share this... We could... If the clerk wants to make a copy of this, we could pass it around. It's only about an hour old. I'm sorry you didn't get it, but we were working on this today because I was interested in what the total compensation package is. Too frequently, we just look at the wages. And, you know, that's only part of the picture with how we're compensating the employees. So the wages went up, but healthcare and stuff essentially went down. What we're paying for all of that went down. And so the net for the employees is going up the .37%, which is lower than inflation. So we're beating inflation, so to speak, as far as a cost factor for the borough with these contracts, and getting better each year going forward.
Any other... Yes, Mr. Cooper?
I just wanted to thank Ms. Stuvik and the bargaining teams, both management and the unions, for reaching a good agreement on this, and especially thank our representative employees from this bargaining unit for the great work that you do. So thank you.
Mr. Roberts.
So my testimony on this was originally, and I'll go over what that was going to be first, is that I think the agreement came out pretty well, as far as we're concerned. You know, it didn't... It isn't going to cost us a lot more, and that's what's important in these times. What amazes me is that the unions didn't want to talk about freezing more or even lowering wages so that more people would stay employed, because we know, based on the fact that we hit the tax cap last year, that people are going to lose their positions this year if we're spending more money. There's no way around that. You know, there's got to be... There's got to be some give here. And so what it means is it's kind of like what happened to the state a year or two ago, where the employees were up in arms because they were going to get a pay cut to try and save positions, and they would rather have those people lose their jobs than lose their pay increase that year, which is amazing just from a human nature perspective, but also the fact that they're going to end up having to work more to cover for those people who aren't there. But saying all that, I was still going to vote for this. But I think that Mr. Lajewski's point is incredibly relevant. You know, just because we haven't defined it as unethical in our code doesn't make it ethical. The fact if we had... If this state allowed private business donations and a business gave a campaign contribution to one of us, and then we had a contract for that business, would we think that was ethical? That we would vote on the contract for that business that gave us a campaign contribution? So why is it different when a union business gives a contribution? So I'm going to vote no on this, but I've said my piece about how I think that the bargaining team did a good job, and everyone was reasonable, and we ended up getting a good deal. But I really do think that it's inappropriate that people who receive those contributions are able to vote for the people who gave them those contributions. Thank you.
Ms. Lajewski. Oh, Ms... Why don't we let the attorney speak?
I just want to make a clarification, that that exemption doesn't apply just to unions. It applies to campaign contributions generally. So I wasn't... I hope I didn't misspeak before. I wasn't meaning to say that it only applied to union campaign contributions.
Thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Lajewski.
Well, I think I agree with everything that Mr. Roberts said, and I will ask, I believe it's coming for us at some point. I know a gentleman who's opening up a marijuana business, and he's been a significant political donor. And when his, you know, no protest comes before us, I'm going to ask to be recused from that because of the donations he's made. And so I think it is important that the members of the public are aware that there are people on the Assembly who've received substantial donations. They may not have been elected in some cases without them from some of the unions. I did some data mining. The top three were one, and I voted for you presiding officer, and I still would. All more power to you for getting political donations. But Catherine Dodge received $1,000 in her 2015 campaign from this particular union, their PAC, and $1,000 in 2012. And I did look for your... Because I know you're involved in another campaign of what you may have received last year, and I don't think you've reported yet, but there could be another $1,000 there and another $1,000 next year. So it's not insignificant. Mr. Van Lawrence, same thing, same two years.
A point of order.
I think we are on a resolution. I think...
I think it's relevant.
Your point, Mr. Quest?
I think it's relevant. So I think that the matter's been discussed. I think that we have a legal opinion, and I think the Chair has agreed that these aren't an issue or relevant.
I think they are.
Tell you what, I'll pass the gavel, since I'm... You may need to pass it on to...
Yeah.
Mr. Cooper? Pardon? We need a motion to... Yeah, the motion to adopt is what's on the floor.
Well, I guess I'm encouraging those who have received political donations to recuse yourself, even though it's not... The rules do not require it. So we have a motion on the floor. We have a point of order or two. As the Acting Chairman, a rule that it is not a conflict of interest for the members who received donations from the unions to recuse themselves. Any other comment on the resolution before us or the motion before us? Ms. Major?
I just want to say, as someone who's been in Ms. Stuvik's position as well and having represented management in union negotiations, I know it's never... It's never easy. It's never tough. Or, I mean, it's never easy, and the unions come in with a very long list of things that they want, and getting to a point where both sides can agree is obviously never easy as well. And so I appreciate what you've done to really manage the financial risk to the borough along with making sure that we have a engaged and happy workforce who wants to work for the borough. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments or discussion on the motion before us?
Any additional comments or discussion on the motion before the body? Seeing none, clerk, please call the rule.
Mr. Roberts?
No.
Mr. Tackey?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Quist?
Yes.
Mr. Logeski?
No.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I'll call you last. Ms., Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Ms. Dodge?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes. Would you wish to change their vote? Seeing none?
Seven to.
The motion carries. Now, we'll turn the gavel.
Thank you. And it's 10 to 7. Does the body want to try the next one? I think we'll hold off and do it at the end of the meeting. What the body would prefer, can we do this in five minutes?
I think we could.
Yeah? Okay. Then, let me find my agenda. So, resolution, we'll go to resolution number 201804, a resolution ratifying the monetary terms of the negotiated collective bargaining agreement between the Alaska State Council of Laborers, Local 942, and the Fairbanks North Star Borough. The sponsor is Mayor Castle. It's on page 375 of your packet. There's additional information in the yellow folder. And Mayor Castle, do you have a staff report?
We do. We'll go to Ms. Stuvik for that report.
Okay, and I'll be very quick. So, this contract is between the laborers, 942, which represents our drivers, mechanics, servicers, and customer service reps in the transportation department. The contract term is the same as earlier, represented from 2018 to June 30th of 2021. The summary of the changes are on page 380 of your packet. This group, we also conducted positive but pretty difficult negotiations. Our team was impressed with the matter, the manner in which the negotiations were conducted with this group, and pretty pleased with the financial terms of the agreement, as they aligned very well with our, our bargaining goals. And on page 384 of the packet shows the financial estimates for FY '19, '20, and '21. The estimated cost for the contract changes with this group is $7,700 for FY '19, $3,000 in FY '20, and a savings of about $7,000 in FY '21. However, as I indicated at last week's meeting, the estimate for the holidays is significantly unrepresented. We are still determining how many holidays that the bus service will operate, but the estimated cost to remain open for each days of those holidays is at $12,500. So, I just want to make sure that everybody is familiar with that. And funding, again, will be incorporated in the mayor's FY '19 budget. So, these employees work hard every day. They provide essential services to our residents. It's not an easy job. They drive in some of the worst road conditions. In fact, they got to go to the 22-car pileup, but they were aiding instead of involved in it. They have a smile on their face. When it's 30 below, they still have to open the bus door and let passengers on and off, and they do a great job. They really care about their positions, and they provide excellent customer service. And that concludes my report.
Okay. I'll look for a motion to adopt.
Move to adopt.
Second. So, moved by Mr. Lawrence and seconded by Ms. Major. Discussion debate. Yep, Mr. Cooper.
I'll just add my thanks again, as I did on the last resolution, and thanks to the laborers for their work.
Mr. Roberts?
My previous comments stand.
Ms. Logeski?
You'll want to get ready to overrule me. I'm just going to let, you know, that there's one person on the assembly who received political donations from this particular campaign.
Anything else? Clerk, I think we're ready to vote.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Quist?
Yes.
Logeski?
No.
Mr. Tackey?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
No.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Ms. Dodge?
Yes. Would anyone like to change their vote? Seeing none?
Seven to.
It's adopted seven to. We're going to recess until approximately 7:00. Okay, we're going to call our January 25th meeting back to order. We are at, well, I'll start with the safety minute, since we've had a few people join us. We have three exits here, in case we need to use them. There's a door right between, right behind the pillar there, the doors we came in through, of course, and then another door back there through the pillar, if we need to go. Those are good doors to take. So, let's see. I believe we are at reports from our representatives, and our City of Fairbanks representative doesn't appear to be here, must have, be having cold weather issues. And that takes us, though, to our City of North Pole representative, who made it in, Ms. Walsh. Welcome.
Thank you.
Have you a report for us?
I do, I do. The mayor sent me a little note here, saying that North Pole, so far, are just getting in the last parts of the taxes. They're not coming in as many of them as we would like at this point, but we believe that with the less expenditures that we've had in the different departments, that we hope that we're still going to be in the black this year. So, that was one of the things that he told me. The other thing, I'm trying to remember what else he was telling me here. Hang on just a second, if you don't mind. I will pull up his actual email, so I don't speak here. Yeah, of course, we are, we are hiring in North Pole right now. So, if anybody know of anybody who's interesting in, in AR clerk for utility billing, it will be open for the next two weeks. And we're also looking for a lieutenant for the police department, which will be closing tomorrow. So, those are the two things that we're hiring for right now. We are also finishing up the final paperwork for the water system constructions. It's been signed by all the parties, and the generally contractor, he has started to prepare for this work this spring and summer, and that's for the expansion of the water system due to the sulphalane problems we have out there. And then, finally, on Tuesday, January 30th, at 6:00 PM, there will be an air quality meeting sponsored by Mayor Castle at the North Pole Library. And our mayor will be there to answer any questions. So, if you have any ideas, or questions, or comments, this would be the time to meet us out at North Pole Library. And that's it.
Super. Let's see if there are any questions or comments. See, yes, Mr. Cooper?
I just want to say, welcome.
Thank you very much.
Nice to have a new face from North Pole, so thanks for joining us.
Yeah, it's a long drive. Long slippery drive.
Two new faces. We have your buddy with, with you, too.
Yes, my buddy is with me.
Yeah, we appreciate you making the long drive in. So, I don't see any questions. Thank you. That takes us to Mr. Rice. Welcome, Mr. Rice. Do you have messages?
Yes, I do, and thank you, and thank you, Assembly members. Just a few things. Our last school board meeting, we did pass a couple of resolutions. One of them is honoring February as Black History Month, and then also February 16th as Elizabeth Petrovich Day. One thing that we're doing is we're working with the local law enforcement in hosting a community event on Wednesday, March, or January 31st, which will provide an opportunity for parents and other people in the community to learn more about ALICE and the techniques. ALICE is the acronym for Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Counter, and Evacuate, a set of proactive, option-based strategies that increase the chances of survival during a violent intruder or active shooter event. The event is open to the public and will run from 5:30 to 7:30 at the West Valley High School Performing Arts Center. With the legislative session underway, the board, at its January 16th regular meeting, approved the 2018-2019 budget priority and legislative focus areas. The Legislative Committee met last night to finalize the district's legislative brochure. The administration is working on the 2018-2019 proposed budget, and expects to present it to the board at their February 6 regular meeting, and we will look forward to working with the borough throughout the budgeting process. Next Thursday and Friday, February 1st and 2nd are designated staff training days and professional development days for staff. School will be dismissing students early on Thursday, February 1st, and then that Friday, school will be closed. And then, we also have a professional development day, that February 3rd, on that Saturday. And it'll, it's facilitated by Dr. Nicholas Clement, and that is about it. Our next meeting is February 26th at 7:00 PM.
February 26th or January?
February, oh, February 6th, sorry.
Oh, okay.
February 6th.
Say, you have a nice break. Okay, let's see if there are questions for you. Oh, thank you very much. We appreciate the, the report, all the good information. So, that takes us to special orders, public hearing, and we're going to start with, yes, that's right, Mr. Quist.
I'd like to declare a potential conflict of interest for the next two items on the agenda. Items A and B are marijuana license limited cultivation in standard cultivation facilities. As many of you may know, I was married on the first of the month, and my in-laws are cultivation licensees, and so I think that I potentially have a conflict of interest.
I'm looking at the attorney.
So, I'm assuming that these would be competitors of them, so I, I believe, yes, that would give you a conflict of interest.
It seems reasonable. Thank you. We appreciate you grabbing my attention. Mr. Tackey?
Yes, I, too, would like to declare a potential conflict of interest. Being a co-owner in a marijuana product manufacturing company, these two licensees could be potential vendors of mine.
Thank you. So, any, any, we're getting thin up here. Okey dokey. We're, we're moving on now to marijuana license, new limited cultivation facility, license number 12452. It's on page 28 of your packet. It is the Great Alaskan Bud Company, LLC, doing business ads. Great Alaskan Bud Company, LLC, 2515 Street A, Maria Street, Suite A, I believe that must be, 2515 Maria Street, Suite A, Fairbanks, 99709. The resolution, and we also have resolution 201802, a resolution protesting new limited cultivation facility marijuana license 12452, Great Alaskan Bud Company, LLC. The sponsor is Assembly Member Roberts, on page 34. And Mayor Castle, do you have a staff report?
We do. We'll go to Chief of Staff, Mr. Jim Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Dodge, Borough Administration has reviewed the limit, the new limited cultivation facility license for the licensee application, applicant before you. The property is zoned consistently with its intended use, and Borough Administration recommends no protest.
Okay. And Mr. Roberts, do you have a staff report?
Yes, so the, the protest is based on the fact that marijuana cultivation negatively impacts public health. The facility is licensed, would operate in violation of federal law, and it would operate in a residential neighborhood, negatively affecting the neighborhood.
Thank you. And Ms. Attorney, would you like to give us a brief staff report, or just draw attention to your email?
I'll just remind you of previous advice I've given about proximity to a neighborhood when it's, when it complies with our sensitive buffers. You're going to need more information on the record than that, than just proximity to the residential area in order to support a protest.
Okey do. Thank you. So, now, I am going to open public hearing up, and I have no one signed up, so if anyone wants to come and speak on marijuana license, new limited cultivation facility, 12452, Great Alaskan Bud Company, now would be a good time to come speak. Please come join us. And are you the applicant?
I have a power of attorney from the applicant.
Okay, then you'll have 10 minutes. Please give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Dan Sweetard, 760 Jamal Lane, Fairbanks.
Thank you. Please proceed.
So, this is going to be a little different response than what you're normally used to hearing from marijuana licensee application applicants. Carol Bolt is who I represent here, and she also happens to be my wife. We were married a few months ago. She started this process before we were married, and she started this process about the time that my first wife passed away. She, at the end of her life, my wife used marijuana to control pain and to get away from the opioids. You know, they're, they're not good on a long-term basis. However, both Carol and I are Christians, and so was my former wife. And the longer this goes on, you start something, for Carol's sake. She was single and looking at retirement with no income, and thought this would be something to do, since it was a ground-floor business. But since we've been married, I've raised seven children, she has one, so together we have eight. And the longer we're together, we just believe that God wants us to be doing something else besides this business. Well, the only reason we haven't actually formally pulled out of it was because of a partnership we had, and we didn't, you know, when you make agreements in business, you try to keep those agreements. But I got word this evening that they are okay with us shutting this down. So, we haven't had a chance to go to the AMCO board yet, but we will. I would encourage that the resolution be adopted, and it's that simple.
Is that pretty much what you have to say right now?
Yep.
Okay. Let's see if there are questions for you. Yes, Mr. Logeski?
Wait, you, you said you encourage the resolution be adopted. Do you mean that you encourage us to no protest, not the resolution, which would?
I recommend that you protest the application.
Okay.
Mr. Cooper?
So, would it, I don't know if it would make more sense, is the right word, but to postpone it, to give you time to figure out what you wanted to do, and formally withdraw the application?
We tried to do that today, but I didn't submit my power of attorney, and they just shut us down. They tabled everything until April, so I'm just going to go in and formally shut it down. The only reason Carol is not here speaking for herself is because, over a year ago, she bought a cruise, and she happens to be out at sea. So, before she left, we discussed this, and we signed up power of attorney, we got everything squared away, and decided what we're going to do. And I just got word an hour ago that our partners are fine with us shutting this down.
Are there any other questions? Mr. Sweetard, is it?
Sweetard.
Thank you very much. We'll see if anyone else wants to make public comment, and then we'll.
Thank you.
Consider the resolution and the ordinance, or the license. I don't see anyone else coming down to speak, so we're going to close public hearing. Look for a motion to adopt. Mr. Roberts, do you want to move?
Does someone have to move the license first?
It's a good idea. Thank you. Mr.?
No, actually, the resolution.
Yeah, so I was thinking we do the resolution first.
Couldn't remember, sorry.
Yeah, it's been a while.
I will move resolution 201802.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
So, it's been moved by Mr. Roberts and seconded by Ms. Major. Discussion, yes, Mr. Cooper?
I guess I have a question for Ms.
Oh, let's see, this is on the resolution.
Sorry, Mr. Roberts, let's speak first, sure.
Do you have anything more to say about the resolution?
I don't have anything more to say.
Okay. Mr. Cooper, on the resolution?
I guess I have a question for Ms. Dolan. What's the, the proper procedure here if the applicant doesn't want to move forward with the license, because it seems that a resolution protesting it isn't the quite correct process either?
Yeah, I think I agree with you, because the protest actually has legal implications for us, where we have to go defend it, and so I would just not take a, if you don't want to take a position on this, or you don't want to take action on it, then the process will just move forward with AMCO, and he can withdraw there without any interference of us or participation of us. So, it's probably better, instead of to move the protest, just to let the action die. You don't have to take action on a license. You just have 60 days if you want to take action. So, your 60 days will be up, I think we said February 4th? February 2nd? Somewhere, somewhere around there. So, frankly, you don't have another meeting. So frankly, you don't have another meeting before your time to do anything on this is over. So unless you truly want to protest it, I would just move not to take action and let it go and let it resolve between the applicant and AMCO.
Do you happen to know the process with AMCO for withdrawing a license? Is it something that the applicant can do? You can actually write or call AMCO and say, "I want to withdraw my application" and stop the process there?
I'm assuming you can. I don't know. I can't think of anything off the top of my head. And the regulations have actually never really been asked. But I'm assuming it's along the lines of a zoning permit application or something here at the borough where the applicant has the ability to withdraw it.
Thanks.
On the resolution, Mr. Gray had to stand up next.
It's the exact same question, thank you.
So, Mr. Roberts.
I'm just going to address that, well, I don't know the process. There's, on their list of sites, on the website, they have a section for withdrawn applications.
Yes, Mr. Lajewski.
Might be a question for the clerk. Is there a movement of no action?
We can make that motion, but right now we've got the resolution in front of us.
If you defeat the resolution, then you.
Right, then someone would make that motion. Okay, any other discussion on the resolution? Yes, Mr.?
I was going to say for Mr. Sweetard and the applicant, I understand where you're coming from. I'm not going to support the protest resolution because of the process issue. But I think that you may have remedies after today by calling up AMCO and continuing with that process. So thank you very much for providing that info.
Anything else? Yes, Mr. Lawrence.
And I won't be supporting this resolution because I don't agree with the basis of it.
Mr. Roberts.
So I just want to point out that if he withdraws the application, then the attorneys won't have to go to Anchorage to support the protest because it won't be an agenda item. And so there's really not a cost to it with a little bit of delay on the attorney's part till the withdrawing happens, before they do the actual work they need to do.
Are we ready to vote on the resolution? Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Lajewski?
No.
Mr. Cooper?
No.
Ms. Major?
No.
Mr. Gray?
No.
Mr. Lawrence?
No.
Ms. Dodge?
No. Would anyone like to change their vote? Seeing none. The resolution is defeated 5-6. Mr. Lawrence.
Move to take no action.
Second.
So it's been moved by Mr. Lawrence and seconded by Mr. Gray to take no action on the no protest motion before us? Discussion, debate on that. Seeing none. Clerk, I think we're ready to vote on the move to take no action.
Mr. Lajewski?
Yes.
Ms. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Ms. Dodge?
Yes. Would anyone like to change their vote? Seeing none?
7-0.
The move to take no action passes 7-0. And that takes us to marijuana license new standard cultivation facility, license 14467, page 36. Tenonah Herb Company LLC, doing business as Tenonah Herb Company LLC, 1200 Wall Street, Fairbanks. And Mayor, yeah. Mayor, do you have a staff report?
We do. Back to the Chief of Staff, Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mayor, Ms. Dodge. Borough Administration has reviewed the new standard cultivation facility application for the licensee application before you. The property is zoned correctly with its intended use, and Borough Administration recommends no protest.
Thank you. I was going to, so we're going to open public hearing on marijuana license 14467. I don't have anyone signed up to speak on this. Does anyone wish to speak on it? Good evening. Thank you. And your name and address for the record. We'll give our friend a minute to join us. And I believe you two are the applicants, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. So if you give us your name and address, you'll have 10 minutes.
My name is Leslie Nunley, and I live at 2008 Perkins Drive, Fairbanks, 99709.
Thank you.
And I am the company owner.
My name is Sam Hatchey. I live at 2008 Perkins Drive, Fairbanks, Alaska, 99709. I'm an operations guy.
Thank you, please.
We basically just came in tonight, said if you had any questions that we would be available. About, the most I can say is this building, it's been empty for a while. It's a big building. We're starting very small in this building with what we can afford to do, little by little. So the building will be completely restricted access from whether we're using the whole building or not from the start, and it will continue to be that way. So at the moment, we're going to be just using a very, very small part of the building. And it'll probably take us quite a while to get any further than that. Because, as I said, we're doing it as we can afford to do it. We don't have huge investors. This is just us, basically. We are over in heavy industrial. We are over in the area where we're not involved in residences. It should be a fairly good fit. We've worked really hard at coming up with issues that have, we've heard about from other people, smell litigation, things of that nature. We've pretty much got that figured out. But if anybody wants to ask anything specific, we're available. And that's pretty much all I've got, unless you want to say something.
You took my thunder. Just like my counterpart here has suggested that it's an older building. It's been sitting vacant for a while, and we're really excited to be able to put people back to work here in Fairbanks. And we feel that it's a great zoned place. Smell mitigation is on our top priority. We will not be exchanging outside air. Because in our proximity to close to downtown, the last thing we want is anybody coming in and saying, "Hey, it's stinky because of your building." Like Leslie had mentioned before, we are starting in a very small section of the building. The entire thing will be restricted access. And again, we don't, we're kind of doing this organically growing, not necessarily what our media is, but how we're developing our business. You know, we started, we were one of the six, seven licenses back in August of 2016, were the original few that came up here on all of what happened. And we've been kind of just pushing hard for the last year and a half and got ourselves into an opportunity where we can expand a little bit, put more people to work in a, you know, new industry. Guys, have any questions? You know, we're available, and we're just excited.
Okay, let's see if there are any questions. Mr. Gray has a question for you.
This building's right at the top of the T on, off Wall Street, right? Okay.
It's the old Odom Building?
Yeah, okay.
We know it well, Ms. Major.
I do have a couple of questions. But first, I just want to say that I appreciate your being mindful of the scent issue, right? I mean, I think in that area, there was the coffee, kind of coffee roasting that certainly created some challenges for folks. And so I know, especially when you do, you're close to downtown and you are close to a couple of schools. And so with that, just a, do you, so it's purely cultivation? There will be no retail? Sorry?
Are you going to me?
Yeah.
At this moment, it is purely cultivation. We may have plans for expansion for retail and other things in the building, but that would be a separate license. It would be a separate process. It might work, it might not. We've already run into one potential issue with the retail, and that would be the fact that that whole area over there, the roads are considered like utility corridors. And so it doesn't meet borough, heavy industrial zoning with onsite parking for a large amount of people or a retail store. We might work through that, we might not, you know? So that's, who knows? At this moment, we're looking at cultivation only, and we're just going to work with that.
Okay, and the visitors to the facility are purely there for the transport of the product to its next location? Next destination?
Yeah, we wouldn't, we're not in the habit of like giving out tours to the general public or anything. Anybody showing up would be there for business reason, you know? Officers or people for deliveries and things.
Do you have any plan for any big signs that might be visible by any of the roadways?
We're restricted on two signs, I think, nine by 17 or something quite small onto our building. So it'd look like a little postage stamp on a giant package on a building that size.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you so much.
Sure.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you. We appreciate it. Coming down. And I have an empty seat. Does anyone else wish to speak on the license number 14467?
Getting up and down.
I don't see anybody coming forward. So I'm going to close public hearing.
Move to file no protest.
Wow. So I'll give it to Mr. Gray, and I'll second it. So it was moved by Mr. Gray and seconded by Mr. Lawrence. And discussion, debate, questions, thoughts? Seeing none. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
No.
Mr. Lajewski?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Ms. Dodge?
Yes. Would anyone like to change their vote? Seeing none?
6-1.
It's adopted 6-1. And good luck. So now we're going to move on to an ordinance that I understand the Chief of Staff's going to go out, step out and order pizza while I read the title of this ordinance. This is ordinance, and I may stop and wet my whistle. Get some water ready. So ordinance number 201801. For the listening public, this ordinance title fills the entire page as you're about to hear. An ordinance number 201801, an ordinance rezoning approximately 218 acres in Section 15 Township 2 South, Range 2 East, Fairbanks, Meridian, including lots 1 through 6 of North Star, 2 Busby subdivision from light industrial, multiple-family residential, multiple-family residential professional office, groundwater damage protection overlay, and water setback designation overlay zone 2, multiple-family residential professional office, groundwater damage protection overlay, and 25-foot waterway protection designation overlay from the meander line of Beaver Springs Creek or other appropriate zone. A portion of Track 1, North Star 2, Busby subdivision from general commercial, multiple-family residential, multiple-family residential professional office, single-family residential 10, outdoor recreation, groundwater damage protection overlay and waterway setback designation overlay zone to general commercial, groundwater damage protection overlay zone and 25-foot waterway protection designation overlay zone from the meander line of Beaver Springs Creek or other appropriate zone. Track A, North Star 2 subdivision, Track C, North Star subdivision 2, and a portion of Track B, North Star 2 subdivision from single-family residential 10, two-family residential, groundwater damage protection overlay and waterway setback designation overlay zone to two-family residential, groundwater damage protection overlay and 25-foot waterway protection designation overlay zone from the meander line of Beaver Springs Creek or other appropriate zone. A portion of Track B, North Star 2 subdivision from general commercial, multiple-family residential, two-family residential, groundwater damage protection overlay and waterway setback designation overlay zone to light industrial with special limitation, groundwater damage protection overlay and 25-foot waterway protection designation overlay zone from the meander line of Beaver Springs Creek or other appropriate zone. And a portion of Track B, North Star 2 subdivision, and a portion of Track A 1, North Star 2, Busby subdivision from single-family residential 10, two-family residential, general commercial, light industrial, groundwater damage protection overlay and waterway setback designation overlay zone to multiple-family residential, groundwater damage protection overlay and 25-foot waterway protection designation overlay zone from the meander line of Beaver Springs Creek or other appropriate zone, located southwest of Richardson Highway, west of Busby Road, east of the Alaska Railroad and Old Richardson Highway. It's rezoned 201803. The sponsor is Mayor Castle, and it is on page 41 of our packet. Mayor Castle, do you have a staff report?
We do. For that report, we'll go to Mr. Colin Spillman from our Planning Department and Mindy O'Neill from the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the Assembly. This rezone can be found on page 41 of your meeting packet. And this is a property owner-initiated rezone. There are two property owners in this case. The majority owner is the Ainsley International Memorial Fund, and the city of North Pole owns one lot in the rezone. This particular rezone is, as you could tell from the title, a pretty complicated rezone. It's actually seven different rezones packaged into one ordinance, and it comprises 218 acres. I draw your attention to the screen. You can see the location of the rezone. It's entirely in the city of North Pole, primarily accessed off of the Dawson Interchange of the Richardson Highway, but also can be accessed off of Blanket Boulevard through the North Star subdivision as well as the Old Richardson Highway to the west of the subdivision. What I have on the screen right now is the existing zoning map. And as you can see, there's multiple split zones in this zoning map. I'm going to briefly go over the existing zoning there. The purple you see on the screen, that's the general commercial zone around the Dawson Interchange, bordered by multifamily residential behind it in a strip, by single-family, and then a small outdoor recreation buffer. To the south of the subdivision, you have a very small multifamily office section. There's a light industrial section that comprises an existing gravel pit that's on the site right now. And the majority of the subdivision, as you can see in this pink color, is two-family residential. And as you continue on to the Old Richardson Highway, there's also a small strip of multifamily residential immediately bordered by a strip of general commercial. So what you're going to see on the screen now is the proposed zones. So the five different proposed zones being overlaid over this existing zoning districts. The first zone, the applicant's proposing and the Planning Commission made a recommendation on is entirely general commercial around the area of the Dawson Road Interchange. The second zone is the multifamily office. This is essentially a cleanup of this zone. The original zoning action took place, took place in 1986, and there has been a subdivision since then. So this is essentially lining up the existing multifamily office zone to the existing parcels. The applicant and the Planning Commission are proposing a two-family zone, a two-family residential zone to the north of the subdivision, adjacent to the North Star subdivision, accessed primarily off Blanket Boulevard. The majority of the subdivisions propose to be multifamily residential, comprising over 100 acres of this subdivision. And the final proposed zone is light industrial with special limitations. And as you can see in the ordinance in the attached staff report, the special limitations are very strict for the light industrial zone. To briefly summarize, it is special limiting the light industrial zone very similar to the general commercial zone with one of the only allowed uses being a conditional use for mineral extraction. And the applicant has stated that they wish to do some gravel extraction in that area. And if they were to do that, they would have to get a conditional use permit through the Planning Commission. In addition, the Planning Commission recommended a 25-foot waterway protection overlay to be placed over Beaver Springs Slough, which runs through the property. And the entire subdivision is being proposed to be covered by groundwater damage protection overlay, which is already in existence on the subdivision. What I have on the screen right now is the proposed replat the applicant has also submitted concurrent with this application. It is yet to go before the plating board. But the applicant has expressed a desire in this replat to create 45 lots and seven large tracks, lot sizes ranging between a half of an acre and one acre. of an acre and one acre. What you see on the screen right now is the existing comprehensive plan designation. These designations were derived in the 2010 update of the North Pole Land Use Plan, and the purple you see adjacent to the interchange, as well as the Old Richardson Highway where that light industrial is being proposed, that is the commercial residential office designation in the North Pole Land Use Plan. The orange, which is the majority of the subdivision, also where the applicant is proposing the multifamily residential zone, as well as the two-family residential zone, that's shown as high-density residential in the plan. And the final, the green area comprising the gravel pit area, that is shown as parks and open space. I will say the planning commission did have quite a bit of discussion about this, but at the time, there is no public entity willing to take over maintenance of this area, and the applicant at this time is not dedicating that to the public. This is the existing utility map. All of our zoning districts in this proposed rezon do reference the need or desire to be linked to community sewer and water. So I'm showing the area having water run through it, and there is an existing sewer line, as you can see in this purple diagram right here. It is in the ground, but it is not operational at this time. And there was some conversation last week about natural gas. I've also shown in green in all the adjacent subdivisions in North Star, the subdivision to the north, as well as a main line on the Old Richardson Highway here, the presence of natural gas lines. As far as staff analysis goes, we did several different analyses, including a spot zone analysis, which I went in great depth with last week during the work session. This proposed rezon does fix a number of existing spot zones, and staff feels the proposed uses, the setbacks associated with those, and the lot sizes are more consistent with the comprehensive plan than the existing zoning designations. The proposed waterway protection overlay around Beaver Springs Slough would add more protection than the existing waterway setbacks. We feel that is consistent with the comprehensive plan. And with the special limitations associated with that light industrial zone, we do feel that that is also consistent with the comprehensive plan. The planning commission held two public hearings, one on November 14th and one on December 12th on this. 189 dear property owner letters were sent out. At the hearing, we had two members of the public testify, including the mayor of North Pole, and ultimately, the planning commission did vote seven in favor, zero opposed, to recommend approval of this rezon with eight findings of fact, and those can be found on page 42 of your meeting packet. And I do have the new chairwoman of the planning commission with me, Ms. Mindy O'Neil.
Thank you, Kellen. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the planning commission. So as Mr. Spillman noted, we heard this twice and approved the applicant's, the application. We did have debate and unanimously agreed with the recommendations of the staff. The debate surrounded the water protection area. There was a setback initially of 50 feet, and it was reduced to 25 feet with staff recommendations and the approval of the applicant. There was an agreement that the 25-foot setback as a water protection actually met the intention of the applicant better, meaning that it was a stronger protection of the natural habitat there, and also met the intention of the applicant to keep the natural habitat around that area. We also discussed the gravel extraction and noted that while it may pose a few inconveniences with the residential areas close by, it did meet the light industrial use and was considered a temporary use of the area. We found that it met the safety, health, and welfare pertaining to the criteria of what the planning commission has to look at, the comprehensive plans within the borough, and met the utilities and facilities that we were required to examine. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And that, I presume, concludes your staff report, Mayor?
It does. Thank you.
Okay. Then we're going to open public hearing on ordinance 201801, and I have three people signed up, so I'll start by calling those three people forward, and then if there are other people that want to speak on the ordinance, then we'll just fill empty seats, okay? So I'm going to start with Jerry. Thank you, Kernan, and Paula Hicks, if you'll take the empty seats. I obviously misread that, too. Mr. Kernan, your name and address for the record, please.
Jerry Kernan, 1141 Lake Drive, North Pole.
Thank you.
So, this is the fourth hearing, I think, on this, so we're covering this pretty good, I hope. But I'm Jerry Kernan, general manager of the Ainsley International Memorial Fund, the holding company basically of the balance of the Ainsley estate. Yes, sorry.
So you're the applicant?
I'm the applicant, yes.
You're representing? Thank you. We'll give you 10 minutes, and thank you.
Okay. And Paula is my, she's taking care of all the work on it with Northern, with Northline Surveys. So anyway, we're a holding company, basically, holding the balance of the David Ainsley estate as he passed away a few years ago. I've worked to carry out Mr. Ainsley's development plan since 1982, and he has done subdivisions since 1962, and he's done over 600 acres, with, we have 200 acres about left to go. Proceeds from the sale of the properties go to the shareholders, who are, for the most part, nonprofits that help meet our community needs, state, national, and worldwide needs. The management team, who are present with me tonight, in cooperation with Mayor Bryce Ward, have been working off an existing master plan that's been posted in City Hall, North Pole, for quite a number of years. I'm sorry I wasn't able to attend the January 18th meeting. However, there was some concerns on the sulfene air quality and parks in the area and water and sewer. It seems like a lot of those things have been answered already, but if there's any questions on those, of course, I can answer them. We had a meeting with Major Cole, I believe it was, and Jim Dodson a few months back, and we assured them that we would do our best to open up some of our land for multifamily housing and commercial. The major wanted to make sure that we open up both, because they don't want, not just housing, they want facilities, all kinds of movie theaters. He was listing all this stuff, and I says, "Well, that takes a lot of money." But anyway, so we're endeavoring to get ready for the F-35 buildup, and also just for the demand that we've had on our property, that we are finally conceding that trees will have to come down, and people will get to have some more beautiful homes. It is a gorgeous area. So we'll be shortly presenting our replat stuff, and I'll start going back to hearings, and the whole process is going good. For me, being with the company so many years and seeing the growth of the city of North Pole, and what we can do for the city has been fun and challenging for us. We hope that you'll stand with us in support of this rezon. We have taken huge efforts to ensure that natural beauty of this area remains. Some of the most desired subdivisions, of course, are those that Mr. Ainsley put together, and they are part of the basis that allows the city of North Pole to function as a profitable city. We hope you'll stand with us on this project.
Thank you. Do you want to testify separately, or do you want to be part of the applicant testimony? Your choice.
You can continue with applicant testimony, and then you can ask questions of us both together. That might be better. My name is Paula Hicks, 326 Dr. Way Street. I'm the land surveyor. It's been my privilege to be able to work with Jerry and all of the members of the Ainsley International Memorial Fund on this project. I never got to meet David Ainsley, but I'm getting to learn more and more about him as I see his vision for the area come closer and closer to happening. We are working simultaneously on a replat, and it has not made it to the plating board yet, but we're very close. And this rezon has a lot of pieces. I wanted to kind of emphasize on a few of the parts that brought up questions last week, and I might be repeating some answers that, like you said, the answers have kind of been given, but just emphasize I wanted to answer those questions. First of all, the plan for subdivision balances the costs of road building and bringing in utilities with the present market price for land in the area. It's providing for the expansion over at Ileson with the F-35 buildup. Part of the plan for keeping building costs down will be provided with the allowance for the gravel extraction on site, as we hope to set aside with the light industrial area. The waterway protection overlay that we've decided to put in place is stricter than the existing waterway setback. It's more consistent with Mr. Ainsley's original vision, as this designation is intended to promote riparian habitat, prevent erosion, minimize natural hazards, and promote waterway ambiance and aesthetics. Anyone wishing to remove the natural vegetation within the 25 feet of the top bank of the creek will have to apply for a conditional use permit, so, and most of the structural development is going to be prohibited in that area. And also, I wanted to touch on one other thing, the little strip of area along existing built North Star subdivision that is not creek, that has a outdoor rec buffer that is going away. We have provided a public green belt easement on the plat, noting that the natural vegetation within this strip may not be disturbed except by dedicated roads. Our intent there was those two dedicated roads might be used, and we wanted them to be able to pass through, but otherwise, we wanted that strip not to have disturbed vegetation as far as protecting those residences. And I think the gas service was kind of touched on. I think the only thing I had to add on that is when we did do the plat review, we provided an easement that if the, if gas service chose to come in the area, they would, they would be provided for. That's all I have.
Super. Let's see if there are questions for either or both of you. Mr. Roberts.
I might have missed this in the presentation, but is all of the land within the boundaries of the city of North Pole?
Yes, affirmative.
Thanks.
Mr. Lawrence.
Mr. Kernan, the owner of the property is this memorial fund, and what was the gentleman's name?
David Ainsley.
Ainsley?
Yeah.
And, and that, in a sense, is a trust for beneficiaries?
In a sense, yes.
Is, could you identify some of the, percentage-wise, the biggest beneficiaries of this fund?
When you look at it, it's, of course, it's on the state website. The biggest beneficiary with the David H. Ainsley Trust, I've got to think of all these things in my mind, the David H. Ainsley Trust, number two, the beneficiaries, and that is 50%, so that's the bulk of it. Then it is 12% KJMP Radio, because Mr. Ainsley actually helped to fund KJMP Radio and gave them all that 50-some acres to get started there, because he wanted a local radio station that helped the public. And then it goes on down from there to 10s, and then it goes all the way down to, I think, like 1%, but that's the bulk of it, is that 50%.
All right. Thank you.
Rescue mission is on there, and a few other ones that do a lot of our community stuff here.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicants? It looks like you've explained it well, answered questions, and our work session did, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I have Mr. Richard Hiren, and I have an empty seat if anyone else wishes to speak on this.
It's Hiren.
Hiren, my apologies. Your name and address for the record, please.
326 Dr. Way Street, Richard Hiren, H-I-E-R-E-N, Fairbanks. I just wanted to emphasize the importance of this development to the number of charities that were mentioned. I actually started work on this and had a master plan that this follows, basically, in 1977. So this isn't, this isn't something that happened overnight. It's been long in coming, and out of respect for Dave and his forethought in putting this back to his community, I just hope that everyone can support it, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Let's see if there are questions for you, Mr. Hiren. Sandy, thank you very much. Does anyone else wish to speak on ordinance number 201801? Seeing no one coming forward, I'm going to close public hearing, look for a motion.
Move to adopt. Second.
Mr. Gray, Mr., okay, Mr. Gray moved, and Mr. Tackey seconded discussion debate on 201801. Yes, Miss Major.
I'll just reiterate my comments from last week, and I think that it's great to see this project come forward, especially with its importance to Ileson Air Force Base and the expansion of the F-35s. And I look forward to seeing what the development looks like in the future.
Super. Any other comments? Seeing none, clerk, it looks like we're ready to vote.
Madam Chair, Mr. Gray.
Yes.
Mr. Cooper.
Yes.
Ms. Major.
Yes.
Mr. Quist.
Yes.
Mr. Lojeski.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Tackey.
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence.
Yes.
Ms. Dodge.
Yes. Would anyone like to change their vote? Seeing none?
Nine zero.
It's unanimously adopted, nine zero. We look forward to celebrating their work. Okay, that takes us to consideration of calendar unfinished business, of which we have none. And that takes us to citizens' comments, and this is on items that are not scheduled for public hearing. It's a continuation of our earlier citizens' comments. I don't see anyone coming forward, so we'll open those and close those. And we've done resolution 201803 and 04, so that takes us to another citizens' comments, and this is on items other than those appearing on the agenda. So really kind of anything might be going on, how the northern lights are working. I don't have anyone signed up. I'm opening them. I don't see anyone coming forward, so we're closing those citizens' comments. And that takes us to assembly member comments. Mayor, you weren't on the radio for your mayor's comments earlier. Anything you want to add while we're speaking with our radio listeners?
If you're interested or have questions on air quality, Tuesday night out in North Pole, 6 o'clock at the North Pole Library, we'll be discussing air quality regulations and options available to folks for meeting the regulations without too much interference, hopefully, in their wood stove burning.
Thank you. Ask Mr. Quist.
I have a question regarding that meeting. Is that something, the way that was noticed, is something our assembly members will be able to attend?
Yes, Mr. Quist.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And quite a few of us may be there. That takes us to assembly member comments, and I'll start with you this time, Ms. Major.
So I will just say that I was disheartened watching the news with AMCO's recent decision regarding distilleries. I think that's really unfortunate for some of our, our distilleries in town, and certainly what it can do for even our tourism industry, and I'm hopeful that, I'm sure they'll come up with creative ways to work through it, and I'm hopeful to see that, you know, AMCO doesn't make any more decisions that could have an impact. I also just say, you know, it's definitely been tough watching politics play out at the national level lately. I certainly felt it quite personally. But I also, you know, especially when you look as, as different groups point fingers and place blame, I appreciate the civility of local politics. I think that's one of the best parts about being here, is the fact that we get to be nonpartisan, and, and we get to focus on what's most important, and that's our community. And so I also appreciate the fact that, or look forward to a much lighter sort of financial or budget-making process on this end in a couple of months. All I have, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Roberts.
No comment.
Thank you. Mr. Quist.
I gave a report earlier on commissions and committees, but now that we're on the air, I'll just mention the ones that are coming up. We've got the Air Pollution Control Commission meeting on the 6th, 6th, at 6:00 p.m. here in the chambers. And then also, and actually, I have an update, this is my last report a couple hours ago. We've set a time now for capital projects and legislative priorities. It'll be Friday, the 9th, at noon.
Okay.
And that's all I have now. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Cooper.
No comment, but I'll add to Ms. Major's comments about the local distilleries, just to say that AMCO adopted a position, it still has to go to Lieutenant Governor for approval, so there's still time for people to make their businesses heard about the importance of these local businesses in our community.
Thank you. Mr. Tackey.
I have no comment right now, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Lojeski.
I second Ms. Major's and Mr. Cooper's comments.
Thank you. Mr. Gray.
I guess I thirded those comments, then.
Mr. Lawrence.
Well, I have, I'm in agreement as well, and I have no, no other comment to make.
Well, and I associate myself with those remarks also, you know. We have many different little things that are developing our economy and helping making, improving our quality of life, and people have invested in their businesses, and we certainly like to see them have opportunities to be successful. So Thursday, our assembly schedule for the week of January 29th is So Thursday, our assembly schedule for the week of January 29th is Thursday, February 1. We have our finance committee at 5:30, and that's followed by the committee, the whole work session. And I wanted to remind people that on the radio that there's a Hays Research phone survey going on, that if the phone rings and they say the borough has asked us to do a survey, it is indeed credible. And with that, we are going to move to a public update by the borough's chief spokesperson relating to collective bargaining with APAA, and then with a possible executive session as needed. But for now, we'll do a public update. So, Ms. Dubeck, welcome back.
Thank you. So we have reached a tentative agreement with the Fairbanks North Star Borough Employees' Association, or the APAA group. That occurred on January 5th of 2018. We have tentatively scheduled the resolution approving the monetary terms of this agreement for the regular meeting of the Assembly on February 22nd. The employees will be meeting to ratify the contract the first week in February, and so we should know whether it's ratified by the employees before the resolution comes before the Assembly. That does conclude my staff report. I would like to provide an update on some of the terms in that contract via an executive session, if possible.
Yes, Mr. Cooper.
I was going to move to go into executive session, but I suppose we can see if there's questions first in the public.
That's true. Any questions of Ms. Dubeck? Yes, Mr. Lawrence.
I guess it's a scheduling matter. Why is consideration of approval of this agreement being put off until the last Assembly meeting in February instead of the first one?
We'd like to bring the contract forward after it's been looked at by the employees, and they weren't able to schedule those meetings until the 9th, and then I'm out of the office the next meeting, which was the 15th, so it's the 22nd.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Quist.
I have a kind of a procedural question. If we go into executive session here, that's our last agenda item, and we come out, and then that's the end of our evening.
That's correct.
I just kind of wanted to also say that out loud so they can hear us on the radio.
So KUAC knows. Yeah, that is correct.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. Anything else? Okay. Mr. Cooper, you had a motion.
I move to go into executive session for the purpose of receiving a collective bargaining update from the borough's chief spokesperson regarding the negotiated terms as they relate to the monetary goals for the Alaska Public Employees Association.
Second.
Who gets it? Okay, so it's been moved by Mr. Cooper and seconded by Mr. Tackey that we move into executive session. So with that, we're going to take a brief at ease while we configure the chambers for an executive session, probably about five minutes. I'm sorry, is there any objection to us moving into executive session? I see none. Thank you.
Sometime tomorrow.
I was wondering if that would be the case.